Here.
Mr. Badger.
Here.
Mr. Bleefeld.
Here.
Ms. Kiyabachi, here. Mr. Golson.
Here.
Ms. Karyonakis.
Here.
Dr. Morris. Mr. Walker.
Here.
Mrs. Ginsberg.
Yes.
Reed Harris.
Here.
Simran Mehndirata.
Here.
Great, thank you. Would everybody please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome everyone to our October 6th meeting of the Wissahicken School Board. If you take a look at our agenda, you'll see a list of our prior meetings. We met on August 26th for our regular public board meeting, September 22nd for our communication and curriculum and technology meeting. We have our upcoming meetings listed. October 13th is health, wellness, and safety. Again, on October 13th is Board Educational Equity Oversight Committee meeting. And October 20th is facilities. And then, um, let's see. Next, we have our presentations, and that is our recently tenured teachers. Danielle.
Hello, good evening. Uh, so tonight I am going to do the presentation of our, um, teachers receiving tenure. This is an annual presentation. Um, and just as a reminder, in Pennsylvania, teachers acquire tenure after teaching in the same public school for three years and maintaining a satisfactory, um, rating during that time. Uh, additionally, tenure provides greater employment protection and changes, uh, their status from being a temporary professional employee to a professional employee. So that might not mean that much to everyone in this room, but it means a lot to our teachers, uh, to get this status. So this evening, um, we're gonna honor our teachers, uh, receiving, uh, tenure. So first we have Jillian Giantonio from Blue Bell. Leon has Leon Hausman from Blue Bell. Uh, Sierra Rose also from Blue Bell. Diana Ward from Blue Bell. We did a lot of, lot of hiring in Blue Bell four years ago. Uh, Sydney Lamarrone, one of our music teachers at Blue Bell Lower Gwinnett and Shady Grove. We have Jordan Cohen of Lower Gwinnett, uh, Lauren DePietro, uh, from Lower Gwinnett, Tiffany Williams at Lower Gwinnett. And then we also have Danielle Feroli, uh, at Shady Grove. I have Alexandra Monahan from Stony Creek. Jasmine Shaw Morris at Stony Creek. Paulina Stork from Stony Creek. Shannon Bogerspence from Stony Creek. Eileen Ossvedo Gordon from Wissahicken, um, Middle School. We have Carolyn Bates, uh, also from, uh, Wissahicken Middle School. Michael Mark, also at the middle school. And then I have Matthew McKenna at the high school. Carrie Holder, also at the high school. Sarah Horwitz at the high school and Elizabeth in Delgado at the high school. So these are our, uh, presented, uh, tenure, tenure teachers this school year. Um, please help me in congratulating, congratulating each of these, uh, achievements. Thank you.
How wonderful and congratulations to all of them. I see so many familiar names on there. Um, my daughter's second grade teacher, Ms. Monahan is on there. So congratulations to all of them and especially to her. Um, anyone else have any comments?
My kids had Lauren DePietro, the first year she was in the district, and she came in actually mid-year in a interesting situation, but saved my kid's year. I mean, she is wonderful. I love her. She knows how much I love her, but I'm just so pleased that she's in this district in tenure. So thank you, Lauren DePietro.
How sweet. Anyone else? I also have to compliment Ms. Lamarrone. So happy to see her on here as well. And she's an amazing, um, strings teacher. My kids had her for strings and absolutely loved her. Uh, but again, what an amazing group. Um, so, so happy for all. Congratulations again. Um, all right. Well, then I guess we'll move on from there. Let's see, we have our first public comment period. And let me read my comments here first before I call names. Uh, the board appreciates hearing from the community. A maximum of five speakers will be heard on the same topic. Please limit your comments to three minutes. In the interest of fairness and in order to treat all speakers equally, it's our practice not to engage in dialogue. When appropriate, we'll follow up with responses on board docs. And when approaching the podium or coming online, please state your name, your municipality residence, and for this purpose, public comment is on agenda items only. So please state, um, the topic on which you're speaking. Uh, so for this first one, um, we have, uh, Jeanne Jackwack.
Thank you. Rule number one on your agenda this evening is to quote, "Foster safe and supportive school environments." I'm here to speak on behalf of the neighbors that have appeared before you before and the students and staff of your schools as to, uh, the middle school chiller noise issue. Given the preeminent position of safe in your goals, I trust that my comments and those of my neighbors will be taken seriously. It's been sixteen days since the noise test by the district's consultant uh, following the long-delayed installation of the sound blanket at the middle school. Has a consultant's report been received by the board yet? Or by the district? And, and you, and you know, I gotta ask my, okay. I'd like to hear that later. If not, what is the deadline that the district has asserted to the expert to have this completed? If none, one, why has not a deadline been received, given the seriousness of this issue? Given this is the third time the testing has been done and the previous reports have largely been repurposed by the same consultant. It's a simple process which one would think the consultant would only need one day to do this report. When added to the more than three months delay between this board's approval of the sound blanket installation at the middle school and the testing and those not being completed until September 15th after passage of the entire summer full of lengthy heat waves and unhealthy conditions imposed on the neighbors and the testing being done at an ambient temp- temperature sixty degrees. This is what this consultant did. He tested the noise of the air conditioning chiller at sixty degrees. What relevance does that have to a summer full of eighty-plus degree days? We have this. Appears to me that is further evidence of district's inability to manage this. We request the board to assert its authority to have the district take this matter more seriously and timely. Has the board considered seeking advice from an ENT specialist to evaluate the danger level to the students, staff, and the neighbors of the current noise level that this chiller produces? If not, why not? Think that's the least this board's duty is to assure that there's no danger to the students. And we've talked about this for years. Hope you can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There are no hands raised online. All right, then we'll go to our next, um, commenter, Irene.
Good evening. My name is Irene Lewis, and I live in Lower Gwinnett. And I'd like to address the continuing problem of chiller noise at the middle school through the lens of the three distinct goals, of three of the distinct, uh, district goals that are gonna be discussed tonight. One, fostering a safe school environment. Two, strengthening communication and transparency. And number four, ensuring long-term facilities sustainability. Number one, safe school environment. You may, you may not realize, I don't know, the full impact that the chillers have had. Neighbors along with summer students and campers have endured a relentless droning sound every weekday this summer from six AM in the morning until seven PM, a total of thirteen hours a day, every weekday, while we waited for the acoustic fence to be installed. That fence was finally completed in September, and while it dulled the noise somewhat, the sound is still clearly audible on the fields, through the woods, and all the way to the halls on Montgomery Road. Is this not safe for the community? And would it be safer by next summer when children are again spending hours outside and running? Number two, communication and transparency. Through this process, communication has been lacking. We have to be notified of progress, but we have to have comments, you know, from Mr. Bradley, who is the business manager. Where is the district's person who is tasked with carrying the surrounding community on this issue? The most important thing else that I got from Mr. Bradley of the comments and resolutions, they were reminders to me to stay off of school property. That does not reflect the spirit of transparency or collaboration that this board has set as a rule. Now, and goal of the year is about long-term sustainability. The current measures feel like bandits. Machine breakdowns over time and proportion barriers are not sustainable, long-term plan. Compliments temporary services, tools of movement and defense. And hopefully, how will they protect the human health of students and staff who spend long periods of time in front of these units? This past summer, the noise persisted when the building itself was unoccupied. Now, the acoustic fence was still there during the days when its temperatures are in the seventies. Then we face ninety-degree days. I urge you to take a look at the YouTube channel where there are videos documenting our experiences called Wissahicken School classroom.
Thank you so much for your comment. Is there anyone registered?
Hands raised online.
Okay.
Well, I wanna say that I'm reclaiming my three minutes that I was not given last week. It's just ironic. I'm gonna go past three minutes.
Well, Camina, we didn't wait for you to come back on last week. So you have three minutes this week and you have three minutes in second period as well.
So I'm gonna continue. Um, the bottom line is every time that I go online, you, I have no ability to speak. So of course I had to come in today. So I'm gonna go past my three minutes. This is all related to the district goals, and I'm gonna just ask these questions. Let's see if you answer them in the question and answer period. Um, the restorative justice needs to be more holistic. Um, inclusive of parents involved. Training the teachers is not enough. I've had too many cases where kids have been involved and you, you're not bringing in all of the components of the people that need, uh, to be part of the restorative justice practice. How or what steps are going to be put in place to de- to decrease office discipline referrals? Um, it has been known in the black community that white female teachers, um, have a bias for young black boys um, in terms of discipline referrals. So I really would like to know how you're gonna change that process. What, what does it look like? How, what, what does it look like? How do you, how are you gonna try to decrease it? What's gonna be done if the bench- benchmarks on, on safety are not met? Um, what are the, why are the communication protocols not in place now? And the fact that you have to train district leaders about the protocols makes no sense when you've had a superintendent here that was here for ten years. Um, who proposed the portrait of a student process? What are the engagement forms going to look like? How are you defining stakeholders? And what happens to be, what happens to the students that can benefit from the portrait of stu- of student process if it's supposed to be enacted in twenty twenty-seven? Um, the other thing that I wanted to talk about is that I just find it really ironic that you, uh, it was Joe and Amy last week that was all gleeful about the students having a town hall. Um, but you're not, um, gleeful about having a town hall with students related to safety, discipline, curriculum in a setting where the community needs to speak to the candidates that are running for school board. So I just wanted to point out the hypocrisy of those actions. Um, I don't appreciate being disrespected. I was tired last time. I'm still tired, but because of the recent things that have happened to me, I'm not tired yet. So I think that you should be prepared that I'm going to be relentless in my pursuit for justice for black students, black teachers, black, the black community and marginalized students. And if you continue to disrespect me, I'm gonna continue to do what I need to do in the courts. I do have a suit code right now with the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, and I'll talk about that in a second. Go with it, but I should have three minutes reclaimed from last week.
All right, thank you, Camina. Anyone else? There are no hands raised online. Sayida Sados?
Hi, everyone. My name is Sayida Sados, and I'm a parent and a resident of Lower Gwinnett Township and the mother of a twelve-year-old Indigenous Seminole son. I am here tonight because Wissahicken School District presents itself as a district of belonging, but my son's lived experience shows the opposite. His IEP, his disability, and his identity have been disregarded, leaving him feeling unsafe, unsupported, and ostracized. When he was provoked and overstimulated in a cafeteria incident, the assistant principal, a woman of color, immediately suspended him without due process or proper investigation, and the principal supported the decision. Written notice was not even provided until days later. This punitive response was not consistent with IDEA or with FEEP or with the district's own policies. And it reflects a larger pattern. The administrator is known for targeting students of color, especially black boys, with harsher discipline. It is no secret in this district that administrators of color are often put in place as buffers so that when black and brown children are punished, black parents cannot push back as easily because the person enforcing the discipline looks like them. Even staff recognize this imbalance. A high school counselor herself admitted she often has to go to her white peers to get issues addressed because when she raises them directly, she is disregarded. This is systemic and it, and it harms children like my son. Even more concerning is the racialized messaging happening inside classrooms. On the very first day of school, social studies, the teacher pointing to an image of an enslaved black man whose black back was torn apart from multiple edges, saying, "This is what happens when we try to run." The class was supposed to be about the colonies, not slavery. In a class of twenty with only two children of color, including my son, that lesson sent a clear message of violent submission and fear. My son left that classroom feeling that such brutality could happen to him today. That image is still hanging in the room. I'm calling for its removal. At, at the very least, if it remains, then there should be an image of a slain slave owner or slave resistance so that children of color see not only victimization, but also strength, defiance, and liberation. Without the balance, the only message being sent is one of inferiority and intimidation. And I must point out, there are no images of Jewish adults being placed into gas chambers, no photographs of the Holocaust, no depictions of Jews being starved or tortured hanging on the walls. Why then is it considered acceptable to display this torn flesh of an enslaved black man? This disparity is not accidental. It reflects who is protected from re-traumization and who is not. In addition, students were shown the join or die image of a snake cut into eight pieces used historically to urge colonists to unite against French and Native Americans. To my Indigenous son, that was a direct message that his people were meant to be destroyed on their own soil. Why is there no balance? Where are the images of the Seminole people, the unconquered people, who never signed a peace treaty with the US and resisted domination? Where are the lessons that honor, that pride, and resilience? Wissahicken cannot claim to value belonging while permitting biased discipline and harmful curriculum. Belonging is not a slogan. It requires action. It requires fair treatment and respect for disability and teachings that uplift rather than degrade. My son and every child deserves to walk into school each day knowing their safe value and seen for their full humanity. Thank you.
Thank you, Sayida. Anyone else? There are no hands raised online. All right, then we'll close this public comment period. And we'll move on to the board president report. And the only item I have is the approval of our district goals. And then last week we did re- review those goals. Did anyone have further comments or questions concerning those goals? All right, then if there's no further questions or comments, do I have a motion?
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. I think I usually ask at this point if there's any comments or questions, um, but since there weren't any, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Right. Anyone opposed? Right, motion passes. Thank you. Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Good evening. I have one informational item. Um, I am pleased to share an overview of my ninety-day report to the community. Uh, so this is part of my entry plan where I share, um, where I, where I share an update of all of the things that I've done as a part of the superintendent's entry plan. So what to do is, um, walk through the report. The report will be shared with the community in my from the desk of Dr. Dewan newsletter later this week. So I won't spend time on individual slides. There's a lot of text. Um, you'll see in the report, the text is intended for people who are interested to read, um, at length what I'm sharing, but, um, but I just don't want to alarm anyone to think that I'm going to read through the slides. So that's my heads up. So it's more of an overview or a walkthrough, a walkthrough of the ninety-day report. And so it starts with me providing, um, just a note to the community expressing gratitude for, uh, for the warm welcome, for the support from the Wissahicken community. Um, and emphasizes that this, the, the focus of this journey was about listening, learning, and, and leveraging insights to shape the future. And so that is what you'll see as we move through the, um, as I'll give you a walkthrough, the report here. This image you might recall from last year where I laid out the, um, the, the individual um, opportunities that I would have for engagement. Um, and you'll see little check marks at the end of those that I completed. The box section is the fall twenty twenty-five and beyond. So that's when you'll see continued conversations and updates to the community as well. I mentioned my overarching goals were listening, learning, and leveraging those insights. You'll see that there's a direct relationship between what I learned and, um, the actionable plans that are outlined in our goals for this school year. Um, so through those engagement highlights, you'll see the various stakeholders, um, in which conversations and meetings, um, opportunities to connect with individuals to learn and leverage insights both, uh, internally as well in terms of staff and, um, board members, but also community members as well. So you'll see that, um, outlined here. You'll see opportunities that I was able to connect with various community leaders as well as opportunities for engaging, uh, on Capitol Hill to, to advocate for public education. More community conversations with our HSA leaders, the student voices, connecting with staff, professional staff, support staff, all staff. Back to school greetings. And communication invisibility. So this, um, part of the report is highlighting the multiple channels of communication that you'll, um, that you'll see throughout the year. This is not the only, um, these are not the only communication channels for the Wissahicken School District, but these are those that are, have been launched specifically around my entry plan. Want to underscore the Wissahiken newsletter, um, which is new this year, and that's intentionally, um, to share updates on safety protocols and best practices. That's something that um, was in response to the community's interest around being informed about safety matters. And so the process, um, included engaging with various, um, members in our community, um, from staff to administrators, to students, to community members, parents, and caregivers. And then this summer, we spent time looking at the data, both district data as well as information that I received from engaging with all of these individuals to help plan with the leadership team, planning with the board of directors in order to establish goals for this upcoming school year. So here's what we heard. Here, I'll spend a moment. These are some themes from the community feedback. Um, when I say community feedback, I'm referring to all of the community engagement that you saw or heard me reference here. But I also want to in- illustrate the community feedback was also, um, consumed from the, uh, parent or family satisfaction survey is another data set in terms of community feedback. Um, there was also, uh, various surveys throughout the year, including our belongingness survey, some information from that that was gleaned as well as, um, opportunities for families and community members to provide, um, feedback and insights. For example, if they were not able to come to, um, my community conversations event, but they were able to send a note to share their insights as a part of that process. So all of that, um, is what was, um, used in terms of looking for key themes from that feedback, and you see that highlighted here. The importance of school safety and discipline, thinking about communication and transparency, student experience and supports, curriculum and cultural inclusivity, academic focus, and teacher support. And as we look through fall and beyond, we'll see communication plan. We're having conversations about ensuring that we keep the community, um, updated about the goals and the initiatives that are happening in the district. Of course, I'll have regular school visits, um, the opportunity to, it's our classroom instruction and connect with staff and students is, is a core part of, of my role. Um, but also continued engagement with the community. So having follow-up conversations and a meeting with key stakeholders, thinking about those community partners is also very important. It should, it's not intended to be a one-time meeting and that's it, but to have ongoing conversations, um, with those key stakeholders and opportunities to engage with the community i- in an ongoing manner. So you'll see information in my newsletter about some upcoming opportunities around that. And then the feedback loop. It's so important for, for me and our team to always be thinking about and looking for opportunities to receive feedback, but then to celebrate those successes as they arise, to think about opportunities for, um, recognizing the contributions of our students and staff and, and families. Um, because celebrating success is also important, an important part of the story. And then, of course, our theme for this year is every student, every day, and that includes supporting our staff every day as well and making sure our parents and caregivers feel that sense of belonging. And then the district goals, which you have now, uh, voted upon, um, but they were, uh, presented, as you know, at, um, at last week's session and then, uh, approved earlier this evening, but, uh, you would have seen the connection between what we heard from those key themes and the intentional goals that were designed, uh, for this upcoming school year. So at this time, um, I, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions. I appreciate the support of the board, the support of our, our staff and students, the support of our community at large. And I look forward to, um, continued conversations and collaboration. I'm really excited about the journey ahead. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the time that you took to and organize and the thought you put into this in the, um, putting together the past couple of months and figuring out the key stakeholders, who you needed to meet with, what those conversations needed to look like, and what information you needed to gather. And really that organizing information and figuring out what we as a board needed to really look at in the coming year. So I appreciate you really taking that time and also looking at and figuring out what you still need to figure out. Um, so thank you so much for taking that time and, and doing all of that. We really appreciate that as a board. Um, thank you. Other comments?
I would just say, Dr. Dewan, um, as a board member and a parent, I feel like your communication has just been excellent, and I really appreciate that. I think there already has been improvement and um, I've noticed it. So I just, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Um, I said it earlier, but I also wanted to say that I love Dr. Dewan's, uh, like weekly minute recaps. So if you haven't watched those, you should go watch them. They're amazing.
Thank you for that read.
Yeah, Dr. Dewan, just one question. Like, how many, how many times do you have to do that one-minute recap? Cause you do them straight through and then it's, at least the ones I've seen, they're very clean. I'm guessing it's just one try, right?
It is indeed one try, and I'm okay with mistakes. So you might hear a stumble here and there, and I think that adds to the humanity of who I am. Um, so I'm not worried about that. I do try not to do any retakes. So maybe you could go look and look for the glitches and the mistakes.
So I'm not worried about that. I do try not to do any retakes. So maybe you could go look and look for the glitches and the mistakes.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great. Anything else?
Oh, sorry, this echoing a lot of what others have already said, but I appreciate the thoughtfulness. And you know, I feel like we're entering a new kind of stage and, and I'm looking forward to it. And I think, you know, in education, we learn every day. So we're going to keep learning. And I think we're off to a good start. Thank you.
Thank you for that. It is all about listening and learning and continuing to grow. I agree with you. And I'm just honored and excited to be a part of the journey. So thank you again.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, and before we move on to Dr. Gardner, I forgot. I wanted to say, welcome, Simi. It's your first meeting and I'd wanted to say welcome. And I completely slipped my mind. So welcome.
Thank you so much for having me. I'm very excited to be here.
Welcome. All right. Oh, Dr. Gardner, I don't think you have a report, but did you have anything you wanted to share?
No, no report. Thank you.
All right. And Jeff, I don't think you have a report.
I do not.
All right. Anything you wanted to share, though?
I don't need to share anything.
Um, Tim's not here. So do you want to give his report today?
I sure will. So yes, I'm standing in for Mr. Booker this evening. So as the board secretary report, all items reviewed at the work session and there are no changes, lucky for me. And so tonight I'm seeking approval of action items 11.1 through 11.3.
So moved.
A motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, it's approved. Next report.
All right. The next report is the board treasurer's report typically done by Mr. Booker. So tonight this, this, but these items were reviewed at the work session and there are no changes. So tonight I'm seeking approval of action items 12.1.
So moved. Second.
Right, a motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes again. Thank you. Next report.
All right. So for the human resources report, changes from last week's agenda are marked with an asterisk and can be found in bold in the details. These include extracurricular appointments and resignations and volunteer additions, and they are bolded in 13.1, 13.2, and 13.5. 13.9 has also been added representing an employee release and separation agreement. All other items were reviewed at last week's work session and have no other changes. This evening, I'm seeking approval for action items 13.1 through 13.9. Thank you.
So moved.
A motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
Yeah, just quickly on the volunteer list, it looked like there were a lot of additions this time. Is that just because, was there anything special reason for there are a lot of new additions, new bolds on the volunteer list?
So it's the beginning of the school year. So normally that first wave is a little light and then parents want to get into classrooms and be guest readers and help with events. So you're actually going to see a lot more. So we, we have a really heavy volunteer, volunteering community. So this list is going to continue to, to be big, which is exciting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you for covering those reports and for your own report this evening. All right, then we'll move on to our board reports, our committee reports, communications committee. No new items. And Dr. Dewan did a phenomenal job giving the overview last week. So thank you for doing that for me. But nothing new to report since last week. Thank you for that. Curriculum and technology, DM.
Yes, good evening. We are seeking the approval for items 1, 15.1 to 15.3, which were reviewed last week, plus an addition of 15.4, which is an extended field trip for essentials to video production, mass media and animation, last trip to New York City.
So moved.
All right, a motion's been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, we'll move on now to facilities and transportation.
Uh, this evening, we have two items that were reviewed at the work session last week. 16.1 is the approval of a contract for snow removal services. And 16.2 is the approval of the purchase of three 10-passenger vans. Again, these are unchanged from last week. So this evening, I'm seeking a motion for approval of items 16.1 and 16.2. Second.
Just been made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? All right, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Committee.
Yeah, we're seeking approval of seven items tonight. No changes from last week's working session. First two items are normal finance statement approvals. Item number three has to do with waiving stadium fees for a fundraiser. And items 17, four through 17, seven are acceptance of donations.
So moved.
To name and seconded. Are there any comments or questions? I would just comment, thank you for the donations. Put it noted here. All right, we have no other comments or questions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
We have no informational.
All right. Education, committee.
No action items, no report tonight. Thank you.
I still like to say.
Yes, there are no informational items this evening.
Okay. To the report of representatives, extracurricular.
Nothing to report.
All right. And see, I went over last week. We're going to do it last week too, right? Yeah. PSBI.
Uh, I'm going to attend a virtual liaison quarterly meeting this Thursday, so I can report back next meeting about topics that were discussed. There's also this school leadership conference at Kalahari in like two weeks. Or no, no, not this year. I'm fine with that.
You don't have any plans at this time to reflect.
Love it. All right, sounds good. That's it right now. And then for ERC, we actually do have a meeting tomorrow. So there you go.
All right, great. All right. Well, that then brings us to the second public comment period. And for the second public comment period, this can be anything school-related. The board appreciates hearing from the community and maximum of five speakers will be heard on the same topic. Please leave comments to three minutes in the interest of fans. And in order to treat all speakers equally, it's not our practice to engage in dialogue with speakers. When appropriate, we'll follow up with responses on board docs. When approaching the podium, please state your name, the presidency of residence, and the topic on which you're speaking. All right, our first speaker will be Carmina Taylor.
So I put on the sheet that I wanted to talk about the prejudice that I have been, that I have experienced. And I want to talk about right to knows. I want to point out that when I've come up here on three separate occasions over the last 15 years to present an alumni gift to the district, the school board in every iteration of leadership has made me go through hills and mountains and rivers to get it approved. But people that get other things in the district get it with no second thought. For instance, I did a right-to-know request about the mural in the middle school that the Jewish community has a problem with. I sent a right-to-know request to Tim because from my understanding, you can't get anything done in any school without board approval. He responds and says, information is unresponsive. That was his response to my right-to-know request when I asked, what did the board approve of the mural in the middle school? He said, there's no information. But when I asked to get the room changed in the audience, the artwork in the art gallery or in the art courtyard in the high school, I had to go through a whole year's process for approval. Second thing, when I started the Whistaken Alumni Association, I used the logo, the 50th anniversary logo, because I thought there was a connection. Wade denied me and he said that was for internal use. But the Whistaken School Board, the Democratic candidates used the logo. I challenged it with, with her. And he said, yes, they didn't have approval. They violated an inter, an external policy. But Mr. Saltanik gave you, Amy, the opportunity to ask to use it after you used it. So I wonder why is it that anything that Carmina asks, there's all this him and her push and pull disrespect. But then when other people ask that don't look like me, that don't have my status, they get everything done when lickety-split. And I feel like that needs to be broken out. So Tim Ricker is not a Wade Coleman. Whenever there was a right-to-know request and I didn't have clarity, Wade would call me before on simple things for clarity and then answer. Tim does not. So five people that have done right-to-know requests in this district, 90% of the right-to-know requests that should be district information gets denied for no information. So when I think about leadership in the school district and people running for reelection, I'm asking what the hell? Why is it that we don't have the information that we should be asking? And why do you think you should be leading next? You guys sit here and you laugh about the stupidest things and we have real issues that are going on with students and the community. But you sit here and laugh and giggle. This is a school court. This is a school district. And I'm tired of coming up here. I will continue to share with the public how. I will show Tim Ricker's email where he said he, that you guys violated the policy and Mr. Saltanik overrode it and approved it. But I have a denial that I couldn't use the same logo. And I'm in a lull. You guys aren't.
All right, thank you, Carmina. Is there anybody online? There are no hands raised online. So you just settle.
My name is Taylor Suddles, and I'm lower Buena Township. My, I am a parent and a Whistaken student and a resident in Lower Buena Township, as I just stated. I'm here tonight both as a parent and as a member of this community to raise serious concerns regarding the Whistaken Middle School football program. This is not about perspective or fairness. This is about safety, equity and accountability. My son was consistently denied practice reps and then placed into a live game at a position he will never once practice. When I raised concerns, the coach who responded to me was, life is not fair. That is not a teaching moment. That is dismissal of both the child's safety and his opportunities to grow. This district's own athletics policy states that the program is committed to the physical and emotional wellbeing of students. Yet what my son experienced was the opposite. He was treated as an expendable, a placeholder for the ambitions of adults more concerned with winning than with mentoring. I must also raise an equally serious concern. My son is indigenous and brown in color. The treatment he has received has been harsher, more dismissive and less supportive than what I see extended to his white peers. This reflects a troubling disparity that cannot be ignored. The board of culture within the football program seems to prioritize adult recognition over child development. These are seventh and eighth graders, children, care to learn, build confidence and develop skills. Coaches should be mentors who lift them up, not figures who dismiss them. Clichés. And let me emphasize the level of commitment my family made. I stopped my son's regular paid activities once we were still financially responsible for, so that he could fully commit to football. This program requires five days a week, two to three hours a day. A significant sacrifice of both time and resources to make those sacrifices only friend to be disregarded, dismissed and denied opportunity is unacceptable. Coach Eber also informed me that he cannot make cuts and that with 42 players in the team, he told many children they would not be getting practice reps or playing time and they should accept this. In effect, this is a way of him making cuts despite the district prohibiting him from doing so. This is retaliation and it is manipulative and deeply concerning. Children will endure almost anything just to belong with their peers, but that does not make it right. It makes it exploitative. And I am not the only parent raising these concerns. Others have confided that they see the same issues, but do not know how to stand up to this program. Just this past Friday, October 3rd, my parent told me her son received no playing time at all in a junior varsity game because varsity players were placed into javelin spots and jerseys were switched. And on September 26th, my son's last game, I personally witnessed varsity players switching jerseys to play in JV. And I was so directly by the coach that he could do this as long as they did not play the same position the day before. Meanwhile, those same players receiving the bulk of playing time are the ones known for bullying and even participating in the so-called fight floods in the bathrooms. By rewarding them with opportunity and visibility in the program under Coach Eber's direction is giving them inflated sense of superiority over their peers. This is not leadership. Behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. No hands raised online. Close public comment for the moment. Before we get to board comment, I do just have to ask for a clarification with Dr. Dewan for a second. So I did address the mural. So just to clarify, the mural that we have at the middle school was not a donation to the district. It was something that was actually done by our students as part of a project, correct? It was not something that needed board approval?
That is correct. That mural project was not something that required board approval. There was no donation for the board to accept. It was a student-led project. And so you are correct in your understanding.
I just wanted to make sure, because we do have an actual procedure that's set forth in our policies and all HSAs. For example, those are what we were proving this evening. Do you follow that procedure for all donations that are brought for the board?
That is correct. Over $500, if I'm not mistaken. Those donations that are over that amount require board approval. That is correct.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that was correct. And also as far as use of our logo, that's just in terms of. use of our logo, that's just in terms of obtaining approval from Tim Ricker in order to use the logo, which my use of it, I obtained approval. That's all that's necessary, correct?
That's my understanding. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. But as far as again, the mural was not a donation from any organization. It was just students. Okay, thank you. All right. Any board comments this evening?
Um, this is just maybe like an item for follow up really. Uh, regarding the, I guess the chiller, the middle school chiller sound test. I know that happened a few weeks ago and I, I wasn't aware like when we were supposed to receive the results, but I would appreciate some kind of update from Tim, just uh, how that turned out. That'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. And I know that the process included, while the temperature that day was not at its hottest, the process included putting the, the machine at its maximum capacity so that it would be a, a, a fair assessment of what the sound would be, should it be running at full capacity. But I'll make sure Mr. Bricker shares an update in terms of the timeline for when the board and the community members can be aware of the outcome of that assessment.
All right, thank you. Any other comments this evening? All right, then after that, a promotion to a journal.
So moved.
All right, all in favor?